Good evening, everyone. This is our City Council meeting, August 25th, here in the council chambers. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Thank you, Council President. Councilwoman Banks.
Present.
Councilwoman Brightwell.
Here.
Councilwoman Cruz is absent. Councilwoman Haynes.
Present.
Councilwoman Hicks. Councilman, ooh, Councilwoman Protim Hicks.
Here.
Councilwoman Hope.
Here.
Council President Mandelbaum.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. If everyone can please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the Pledge of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on my nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get to our appointments this evening, there we had some unfortunate news in the Southfield community. We had, for those who, I'm not sure if I say the name, Jonice Butler, everyone knew her, she was very involved in the city. She unfortunately passed. And we also had our own Councilwoman Haynes, her father, the Reverend Fred T. Chambers, Senior, passed away as well. And I'd like to ask for a moment of silence for those. All right. Thank you, everyone. We will continue our meeting with our appointments.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
Tonight I have two reappointments, two members of the City Center Advisory Board. These are two very active and hardworking members of that committee that represent landowners in the City Center District. So I'm recommending the reappointment of Kimberly Peterson, who is of the company James Lang &amp; LaSalle, formerly Transwestern, that manages the Town Center Complex. Also, I'm recommending the reappointment of Josh Wardini from Ecken Management, property owner on Central Park Boulevard. Looking for a motion to support those reappointments?
Yes.
I move that we approve the reappointment to the City Center Advisory Board, as identified by the mayor.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilwoman Haynes, to approve the two reappointments to the City Center Advisory Board as presented. Any questions, Council? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Both of them were not present this evening.
Thank you. Next, we have a presentation for a grant award.
Good evening. Before we call up our dignitaries to make their presentation, I wanted to just do a brief overview on our Nine Mile, which has now been branded Nine Line Corridor. And eventually, when this is fully developed, this will connect to the City Center Trail. We have been, as a city, slowly building out the Nine Mile Corridor. Being an auto-dominated community of the 1960s, we actually have many stretches or miles of the corridor that didn't even have sidewalk. And we, in the past, have installed bike lanes and made some gap improvements. But approximately five, six years ago, we made a dedicated effort to start building out the Nine Mile Corridor. Mr. Zorn has often said that the key to connecting to our communities to the east was the downtown development authorities that were transected by Nine Mile, Southfield, Oak Park, Hazel Park, and Ferndale. And over the last few years, the city has invested metro funds into Bauervik Woods Park, approximately $319,000, that built the first half-mile of shared-use pathway. Then the city was awarded a fiscal year 24 TAP grant, part of the Nine Mile Road Diet, which increased additional 12 feet of green space on the south side from Prescott Street to Loser. And then the pathway was extended to Plum Hollow Street on the north. And then in fiscal year 2025, the city received a $533,000 TAP grant to construct a segment of pathway on the south side of Nine Mile from Evergreen to the Southfield Road interchange, which will break down hopefully next year. And we are working towards connecting to the good work that's been done with our partners in Oak Park along Nine Mile. So here's a map that shows the various segments of funding that has been received and projects from year 2022 through the present. We also received an Oakland County Access to Transit grant in 2024 to do preliminary engineering to cross the M-10, M-39 interchange. We received a Michigan Technical Assistance Grant Award in '24, which did a cost-benefit analysis and determined that for every dollar invested in trails along Nine Mile, there was a $7.1 rate of return in economic development, health benefits, reduction of pedestrian accidents, and so forth. Currently, the section of pathway that we're working on is Evergreen Road to Greenfield Road. Phase one is the fiscal year '25 TAP grant, which will be constructed next year. The phase two showing on here is the presentation of the grant award tonight for fiscal year '26. And phase three is the preliminary engineering that we're working on to bridge that gap across M-10 and M-39, which I've affectionately named the Golden Spike Project, similar to the Transcontinental Railroad, where we meet at both ends and we complete our nine-line project at that point. We have worked with our partner communities in South Oakland County to develop a branding Originally started out with the six communities to link I-75 to I-275, Hazel Park, Ferndale, Oak Park, Southfield, Farmington to Farmington Hills. And our partners to the west, Novi, Northville, Lion Township, and South Lion, joined us recently. So we have 10 communities with over 30 linear miles that have a memorandum of understanding to brand and cooperate to develop a truly regional corridor trail. The first of the branding pieces will be installed in Southfield with the tri-poles actually being installed in two weeks. And then we'll be working on a bid package for the nine-line branding at some trailheads, Bauervik Woods Park, Beach Woods Park, and we're working with OCC to develop a third trailhead within the city. This is all culminating and tying in with the work that's been done in the Southfield City Center Trail, which now extends down Northwestern Highway and bisects nine-line, which will provide opportunities for our residents and businesses to connect to the nine-line corridor. And other segments that we're working on is to connect to the Northland City Center redevelopment and the hospital and some other segments that will connect our communities on the south to the nine-line. And when it's all said and done, the nine-line will link to literally hundreds of miles of regional trail by connecting to the west in the I-275 Metro Corridor Trail, which goes all the way down to Lake Erie Metro Park, and then north to the Michigan Airline Trail. And then we will be connecting to the Joe Louis Greenway via the Livinoy Connector. So once this is fully developed, our residents and our businesses will have access to literally hundreds of miles of trails in southeast Michigan. And with that, I'm happy to call up Ms. Amy O'Leary, Executive Director of SEMCOG, who would like to make the presentation and recognize some other speakers tonight. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I want to thank you for your participation in SEMCOG. SEMCOG, as you know, is a council of governments, so we have 186 local governments that are members of ours. But in addition to that, we are a regional planning agency, serving about 5 million people in southeast Michigan. SEMCOG has numerous federal designations, in addition to being a council of governments, including being the Metropolitan Planning Organization for Transportation Planning, as well as the Economic Development District and the Water and Air Quality Planning Agency. As the MPO, we facilitate a number of federal programs, including recently putting forth a $3 billion Transportation Improvement Program, or TIP. And we work with your organization and your community a lot with these projects. We often feel like we're the connection between our local communities and the data, information, and funding programs that are out there, like the Transportation Alternatives Program, and that's what we're here about today. This is one of the essential federal programs currently funded by the Bipartisan Infrastructure Law that really makes a difference in our region. And just to give you a perspective on that, on the impact, over the past 10 years, TAP has invested over $90 million in 152 projects across southeast Michigan. We really do appreciate our supporters and allies in Congress, including Congresswoman Talib, who represents you all, and they help bring the resources to communities like Southfield and the corridors like the Nine Mile Road. This need is very real, and we appreciate that support. Today, we're here to celebrate a TAP project recently awarded to Southfield by SEMCOG's Regional Review Committee. So that Regional Review Committee is made up of people like you, all elected officials from across southeast Michigan. They look at all the projects that come in, and they liked what they saw when they saw your project and all of the work that you and all of the staff are doing along Nine Mile. And the connectivity that you're doing with all of those communities is truly amazing. We like to note, we're really happy that there was a planning assistance grant that again was paid with federal funds to produce really a plan for the development for a greenway along Nine Mile. So it's exciting for the Regional Review Committee of elected officials to see things go from just planning and ideas all the way now to implementation. So a major emphasis as well is improving safety of our transportation system, especially for our most vulnerable users, those who walk, bike, and roll. So our transportation system is critical to filling an array of needs that don't always easily align. So this $1 million grant, as was shown in a great presentation, is something that we're excited to provide to the city and connecting to the City Center Trail. And I'm going to ask a couple people if they don't mind speaking for a few minutes. One is Congresswoman Talib. I thought it was important, if you could come up just for a minute. It's really people like her that make these funds available to us, and I think it's important to recognize that.
Thanks. Thank you so much to Amy. I, so SEMCOG, thank you. I just, I want you all to know, I pay attention to where we draw down money and everything, and this is one of the only ones in the 12 congressional districts we were able to draw down from the Transportation Reauthorization Fund from the federal government, so congratulations on that. You know, as someone that continues to hear some horror stories of our, you know, residents through our biking now, walking more, all of those things, this is so critically important. And so I really appreciate SEMCOG from day one, honestly, that have been my go-to on a lot of transportation projects. They've already vetted most of it. That's where MDOT tells me to go. But I'm really incredibly proud of, you know, Southfield being able to again bring down those federal dollars and get our fair share of resources for our communities, and really excited about this regional pathway.
Thank you. And, yeah, that's great. And then also, we do have a representative from Dave Coulter's office, and I'd like him to speak just for a moment about the connections that are happening throughout Oakland County. And who knows, maybe we can get it into some other counties as well.
My name is Dan Klein. I am the Oakland County Community Engagement Representative, and I'm here today with the greetings and thanks of County Executive Dave Coulter, who wishes he could be here. I'm going to be brief. This is an amazing project, mostly here to thank SEMCOG, to thank the city of Southfield, which have been amazing partners to the county and county parks. We are incredibly proud of our parks in Oakland that, you know, are kind of the gem of this incredible place to live and work and play. And the nine-line connector is just, it's going to make, just be another jewel in our crown, so thank you so much.
Thank you. And if you all would stay up, Mayor and City Council, we present you the $1,094,801 check. Yay! And maybe we could take a quick photo, if that's all right?
Can we say something?
Yes.
Oh, sorry. Oh, I'm so sorry, Mayor. I apologize. Come on up. I don't have my run-of-show, I apologize.
So this, this is phenomenal news. We are very aggressive about securing grants. One of the things that we've been asked, and so I'm glad that we're making a bigger announcement about it tonight, is that people see the pathways and they think, well, I have other priorities. No, this money is coming to the city because there is funds out there specifically for this purpose. I also want to, there are other partners involved in this effort. So the Friends of Southfield Public Arts, which is doing collecting and raising funds for art on the pathway, the Southfield Public Arts Commission, the City Center Advisory Board, all of these work with our planning department in making the total placemaking and what we call Complete Streets Initiative. And this is very exciting for a number of other reasons. We're seeing tremendous amount of development below Nine Mile with Northland. I was down there this morning. There are scores of people working. The apartments are actually being framed out. We will have models open soon at Northland. They believe the first residents will be, can be living there by late October or November. And so eventually, our trail, which is on Nine Mile to the north of Northland, obviously, but will connect to Northland. So this is, I think there's a lot of synergy going on here, and this is, again, a tremendous boost. And I think certainly Nine Mile, this will attract people to live there and to do business. So I want to thank certainly SEMCOG, thank you so much, and always our partner Congresswoman Talib and Oakland County for bringing all of these things together. It does take a team to make these things happen. And to the council, you've all been part of following this and approving this and working together to make all of this happen, so I thank you as well.
We're going to ask all the elected officials, city administrator, and our dignitaries to come up for the check presentation.
So we need to stand here and dignitaries stand there?
Do you want us to stand here?
Yeah.
Can we get the other representatives from SEMCOG, too, Cheryl and Trevor, to come and part of the picture?
One, can we look here first? All right, yeah. One, two, three. Got it.
Did you get your picture?
All right. That's some exciting news. It's always great when we get some free money to help us with our projects in the city, especially with this very long nine-line project. Councilman Hicks, and you had a couple words you wanted to say?
Well, the mayor, the mayor pretty much already summed it up, but I just want to, I don't, I don't believe we can't say thank you too many times. So Congresswoman, thank you. You've always been an advocate on our behalf. You helped make the vision reality. SEMCOG, thank you very much, but I'm going to give you our Cash App and our Venmo. You don't have to bring the big check, you can just wire it to us. But no, seriously, thank you for all that you've done and what you do for Southfield.
Okay, all right. Next, we have another presentation, and I'd like to call up Mr. Roger Goolsbee and Melissa Medici, who will talk about the Southfield Substance Prevention Coalition. You keep changing the name on us.
Don't worry, it took a while for us to get it together, too.
But I also, I want to wish a very happy birthday to Melissa Medici. It's her birthday today.
Happy birthday!
Well, good evening, Mayor, council members, city administration, and the citizens of Southfield and Letha Village. I'm Roger Goolsbee, the Executive Director of the Southfield Substance Prevention and Education Coalition. Along with me today is Melissa Medici and the President of the Board, Darrell B. Joyce. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to the public and to you all here. I'm here to share the progress that we've made in the past two years through rebranding, expanding school partnerships, and deepening our impact in the Southfield and Letha Village community. We are part of 21 coalitions in Oakland County, whose purpose is to educate, support, and lend resources to combat substance use. We've rebranded. With that rebranding, our mission has been sharpened to focus on early prevention, community empowerment, and youth-led engagement. That part is very important because young people have a better scope of what's going on, and they can give us better advice, all of us. We have a stronger school connection as a result of rebranding. With the guidance of the Coalition for Healthy Communities and the Oakland County Health Network and the Drug-Free Communities Network, which is located in Washington and in Atlanta, we have expanded our footprint in Southfield and beyond. Some of our highlights include, one of the programs, if you were out at the opening of school last week, you would have saw it in action. Students signed a pledge that they would not engage in substance use, and we call it "I Breathe Confidence." That was the title of it. We have Narcan training in schools, vaping, fentanyl, and alcohol education. And these presentations are tailored for grade levels, so there's just not a blow the young people out like that. We're teaching them in a manner that they can absorb. We've participated in quite a few events. If any of you have been to some of these events, you've seen our table out there. We've distributed thousands of pieces of literature, preventive, and met quite a few powerful people who can help us along the way. We've participated in parent-focused education nights and community listening sessions. Narcan kits, prescription lock boxes have been distributed with the education to go along with it. And I want to thank the city for working with us in a lot of this, because you all have shown up, and of course, you, the community should try to model your actions. Measurable impacts. I'm going to turn this over to Melissa.
Okay, our measurable impact, we had 42% increase in youth engagements just within the last year. We've distributed over 1,000 Narcan kits among our residents and staff, along with the school. We've had growing teams of youth leaders, parent volunteers, and local advocates. We've provided one box Narcan kits to all public schools and private schools within the city limits. We improved collaboration with schools, public health, and law enforcement. Our coalition is truly involved into a prevention powerhouse today. We're visible and inclusive. We are proud to serve the city of Southfield and Letha Village. The Southfield Public School District and the Southfield Public Safety Department is a key role in our prevention efforts. We are currently working with Chief Barron to submit a request for kratom ordinance within the next couple months. And together, we'll continue to build a safer, healthier, and more resilient future for our youth. We're going to include many partners in the community to help us with decision-making and to execute a plan to save the youth from substance use.
Any questions?
Council, do you have any questions? All right, well, we definitely appreciate all the efforts, and we know we see you at a lot of events and...
And I want to make one more statement. We're trying to collaborate with both city and schools because this is an issue. Most of us sitting here, whether you've been in a school or not, you may not be familiar with how many substance paraphernalia are being confiscated, not just in Southfield, but all throughout the county, America, really. And we have one true advocate of prevention right here in this front row. We've seen Mr. Talib.
I've heard of him in DC.
Yeah, at DC, at the conventions, where hundreds of young folks meet along with their advisors for a whole week. And this is twice a year. So thank you for being an advocate.
We do have one question.
I just really wanted to make a comment on the importance of what you all are doing, and thank you so much for it. A long time ago, we had a program called DARE, and because of the increase in the things that are going on with the young people, it's so important that we are aware. Sometimes, as parents and people, we kind of put our heads in the sand and think this is not a problem, but when we get the... and think this is not a problem, but when we get the situation to arrive, we go trying to find answers and solutions. So I thank you for the preventive measures that you are doing, and I know it's a lot of hard work to get out to these programs and do that, but continue to do the good work, and thank you so much. And I know that there are personal stories behind this, and I just would like to rally the community to get involved to help support them in this cause, because it's all of us that helped to make this a better situation. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, next, I'd like to call on our Congresswoman, Rashida Tlaib. She wants to just give a few updates.
Thank you so much, Council President. So really quick, I know a lot of folks have called our office about the, they called the reconciliation budget, we called the portrayal budget, that recently passed, where you hear about people losing, possibly going to be losing Medicaid coverage. Just so you all know, the changes to Medicaid will not go into effect until January 2027. This is important because a lot of folks are calling our office, you know, in tears, canceling their appointments. This doesn't mean, you know, people's advocacy and sharing stories of what it means if Medicaid got cut even, you know, a little bit for their families. Most of the people calling our office right now are, you know, parents with special needs kids because they have, you know, their private insurance and, but the wraparound services that they get is through Medicaid. And Medicaid is also funds the majority of our births in our district. Statewide, it's over 40% of births are covered by Medicaid, as well as long-term care. So a lot of our season residents who are nursing, nursing care and so forth depend on it. So it's just really important for you all to know, and again, a lot of folks are seeing changes now, and it might not be related to this. It might be just, you know, the state verifying. You can always call our office, and we'll be able to help. The other one that's big, I just toured Forgotten Harvest this past week, is around SNAP benefits. It is true, SNAP benefits, so, so folks know, it's only $6 a day that they get from the federal government. The other add-on that sometimes is from the state, states will sometimes supplement. $6 a day, it's a gallon of milk, like $6 a day. They're gonna cut every single SNAP recipient to 15%, 15% across the board. So again, that doesn't go into effect until October 2027. I'm saying this to you because I hope it makes you angry, because there's time to advocate and see if we can turn this around. A lot of our Corwell, Henry Ford, a lot of our primary, you know, hospitals, or folks that are even connected to your primary care, they all understand this is gonna be a huge impact. I think you're gonna see disruption of services for a lot of our residents. We did introduce, fix our Flooded Basements Act. You know, in the last, since I got elected in 2019, we've had two, not just, but two national declarations of emergencies because of flooding. And I did not realize until it happened that FEMA does not clean out basements. They'll give you a new furnace, a water heater, but they won't actually clean out the basement. So two years later, right now, two years since the last one, we're getting calls from seniors of having mold in their home, toxic mold. So this would change the process to allow FEMA to cover, again, mitigation of hazardous material. Because when that sewage goes down, and you could, you gotta make sure that you're using the proper, you know, cleaning equipment, all that stuff, to have a company come in and actually do it, and we want to make sure FEMA covers that. The other really important one is Stop Price Gouging at our Groceries, Groceries Act. This all came about because the head of Pepsi-Cola was interviewed, and he was asked, you know, during the pandemic, groceries went up, do you see them coming down? And he said, oh no, the consumers are getting used to it. And it, and if, you know, I know Councilwoman Hoag knows me, I, that got me activated of, well, wait, that's price gouging. Like, what's going on here? And that's when we found out there isn't actually a law in place that prevents price gouging, price fixing. You know, Walmart got sued by the State of California recently for price gouging. They're paying $5 million. That's nothing to, to a mega, you know, place that provides a lot of, you know, goods for our families. And then we're also, it also goes in around surveillance pricing, so you're gonna hear more and more about this, but the use of technology, when you go into some of these stores, they have a personal profile. And so when you go in, Councilwoman, they're gonna have a personal profile. They're gonna know your income, and you're a black woman, know all these things about you, and that's what's going, they're gonna use it to fix the price product for you. And that should be illegal. And groceries are already up 28%. And we focus on groceries because, to me, that is the most essential for our families. And, you know, again, I shouldn't be, nobody should be charged different prices depending on what they do for a living or what their, you know, ethnic or racial background is. So we've been pushing back on that. We still have our Southfield office. We're there Tuesdays and Thursdays. Families need anything, they can continue to call us. I know a lot of folks like, oh, I'm gonna wait. Don't wait, even if it's this current administration. We still have been able to work on student loans. We're still being able to work on IRS cases, social security cases, you know, even issues and challenges of the postal service. You can still call our office. And we're also really, we just met with Oakland County Health Department, our Action Network here, visited Honor Community Care. All of that is because when people call our office, we're not gonna say, you know, that's not really what the federal government, we're gonna find partners to be able to help our families. Lastly, and I know we got three projects through our budget, it's in the budget right now, for Southfield. I'm gonna talk about the Aging in Place, because it's my favorite. But you should all know, I was struggling to find someone to be an applicant for home repair. I went to different folks, it has to be a municipality because of the rules, and called Mayor Seiver, and right away, he's like, we'll be the applicant, so we're gonna work with Habitat for Humanity, is that, you know, we're gonna work in providing a home repair direct dollars for our residents. And I know Councilman Hicks was there, and for, a lot of our families right now want to stay in their homes, and they just can't afford to fix the home, or if they now need more accessibility to the bathroom. You know, it costs so much money, and so we want to be able to have that, have those dollars. So it is an extension of a home repair program you all had before. This would add another $3.1 million, and cross our fingers, we'll know more, because we have to pass a budget by the end of this, end of next month. So I'll keep you all updated, but we got three projects in there. It went through a subcommittee. We asked for $4 million, we got $3.1. I'm still very happy. That's a lot of families we can help. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Alright, next, we will get up to, we're up to our communications portion. And before we call up speakers, I just want to give some updates on, from last month and things that we have done and looked into. We had a speaker who talked about bus stops and benches and trash receptacles. Our city planner has informed me that this year, we are installing benches and trash receptacles at 42 different bus stops, and we are working on upgrades to approximately six more. I know that today, when I drove in here down 10 Mile, there were, you could see that there was new cement and some bus, at some bus stops, and there were benches and trash receptacles. So I know that we're installing those at 42 more, or 40, about 42 throughout the city, so that is, that is encouraging. We had a speaker as well who spoke about the new car wash on Southfield Road next to Target. And I know that, that later that week, our code enforcement officer, director, went out to do some decibel level testing. She went out again this week and did some additional testing from the apartment buildings. And the decibels were not that high, however, she did note that the landscaping buffer between the car wash and the apartments, that she's working with our city planner to find out if they planted the correct amount of trees and the appropriate landscape buffer that helps with the noise reduction. I don't know if Mr. Crowe, were you, have you spoken with her? Okay. But they were going to take a look at the, compare what was submitted to the city, as well as what was planted, and then figure out if we just have to wait for the trees to mature a little bit more, or if additional trees have to be, be planted. So we are continuing to work on that. There were comments about fencing along some of our major roads, streets that need to be replaced. There is money set aside in our budget for it. Our Neighborhood Services Subcommittee met this week, and they're meeting again the, a few days after Labor Day, September 3rd. To finish talking about it, they are very close to having a, a fence company selected, but there's additional processes and ordinances that they need to look at because they're, while the city will replace it, they have to work out a maintenance agreement with some of the homeowners to make sure that the homeowners on their side are not disrupting the longevity of the fence. So that will, that is still being worked on by our Subcommittee. I don't, Madam Chair, do you have any? You're the chair of that Subcommittee. Do you have any other comments on that?
Other than, we will be meeting the first week of September, and then it will come back to the full body of the council.
Okay, thank you. We had some complaints regarding the Inglewood Park with the walking path, bathrooms, play equipment. I know that our Parks and Rec Director did speak with that resident, and they are working on some improvements. Some are more capital projects that we have to budget for and, and work out. But we are in communication, trying to do the best we can, at least for the rest of this year, and get those fixed, as well as there were some complaints regarding code enforcement for abandoned cars or disabled cars sitting in driveways. And code, our code enforcement officers are working on that. There were comments made about our swimming pool, and we do have $22 million set aside in our budget this year. Last week, the council got, received an update from our committee who was interviewing architects and builders regarding that. And we hope to have a specific company nailed down next month. And they are continuing to evaluate the different proposals that came in. So we are inching closer to having a plan for the pool with a, with a builder. There was also some comments made about Airbnbs. The city does have an Airbnb ordinance. It's part of our rental ordinance. If you believe that there is a house in your neighborhood that is either a rental or an Airbnb, please reach out to the Building Department. Our building official, Mr. Chuck Woodward, 248-796-4117, will go out and investigate, and we'll see if it is in fact a rental or an Airbnb, and he will take the appropriate steps. There was also some comments about party homes. I'm not sure if they are related to the ones that were, that were already shut down by our police department, and those homeowners are currently on probation for those parties. But if you have a complaint about potential house parties we, that are significantly impacting the neighborhood, we do recommend that you do reach out to either code enforcement or the police department. There was also a comment made about someone doing donuts on senior citizens' lawns and harassing them. We spoke with our police chief. There is no record of anyone reporting these types of crimes affecting our senior citizens. However, the Southfield Police Department did arrest a young man and impounded his Dodge Charger for doing donuts in a Southfield neighborhood, but he is a resident of Southfield, and the donuts were done in the middle of a street, not on a front lawn, but the police were called, and they did, took appropriate action once they got the call. And the chief will also, also conveys that, again, the Southfield Police Department will continue responding to and investigate calls for service regarding neighborhood disturbances. So again, you can call, if you feel it's an emergency, please call 911. If you feel that it's not an emergency, please call the non-emergency number 248-796-5500. With that, we will move to communications for this evening. And I'd like to remind everyone that you will have three minutes, and please give proper respect to all speakers. The Southfield City Council has established the following rules of procedure for all speakers. Each speaker will have three minutes to address the council. Each speaker is responsible for his or her comments, and the city of Southfield does not, by permitting such remarks, support, endorse, or accept the content thereof as being true or accurate. No speaker may make personal or impertinent attacks upon any officer, employee, or city council member or other elected official that is unrelated to the manner in which they perform his, their duties. No person shall use abusive or threatening language towards any individual when addressing the city council. Any person who violates this, this section may be directed by the presiding officer to be orderly. If a person addressing the council refuses when so directed, such person may be deemed by the presiding officer to have committed a breach of the peace if they continue disrupting and impeding the orderly conduct of the public meeting of the city council, and may be ordered by the presiding officer to leave the meeting. If the person who is, refuses to leave as directed, the presiding officer may direct any law enforcement officer who is present to escort the violator from the meeting. The council may not provide responses to public comment during the meeting. If you have provided your contact information when you signed up for public communications, the city will provide a more formal response to you in the near future, should it be needed. The council may respond to comments at the end of communications if they are able to do so. Our first speaker this evening is William Grisby.
Where does my time start?
I'm sorry?
When does my time start?
You have three minutes.
Okay. So I want to keep this quick and easy as possible. So I have a complaint about, about the Southfield Police Department. They're unprofessional and blatantly unconstitutional conduct, especially when it comes to the times that Southfield PD has been called to my residence, 21215 Dartmouth Drive. I first want to bring up the fact that my auntie is going through a bankruptcy right now. She has filed her papers through the bankruptcy court, and her car was illegally repo'd. It was legally, illegally repo'd from the residence. There was automatic stay placed on her belongings when it comes to her bankruptcy case. The automatic stay says is, the definition of automatic stay is, an automatic stay is a legal injunction that goes into effect immediately upon filing of a bankruptcy petition. It is one of the most powerful protections in bankruptcy law, and is designed to give the debtor breathing room, quote-unquote breathing room, by halting most collection efforts by creditors. The stay applies to all types of bankruptcy cases, including Chapter 7 and Chapter 13. I can't comment on what specific chapter she's in the bankruptcy court for, but the Fourth Amendment says that the right of the people to be secure in their persons, houses, papers, and effects against unreasonable searches and seizures shall not be violated, and no warrant shall issue but upon probable cause, support, oath, or affirmation, and particularly describing the place to be searched, the persons or things to be seized. This has been corroborated by the United States Supreme Court in United States v. Jacobson, that says which that, the Fourth Amendment protects all, two types of expectations. One involving quote-unquote searches and other quote-unquote seizures. A search occurs when an expectation of privacy has, that society is prepared to consider reasonable is infringed. A seizure of property occurs where there is some meaningful interference with an individual's necessary interest to, to that property. And I specifically want to call out Sergeant Martinez, Ration Number 461. He came to the residence, and my auntie showed the stay to Sergeant Martinez, and he proceeded to allow the tow truck company, because he said that there was a quote-unquote other legal document. He didn't describe what that legal document was, that the tow truck company had in order to obtain her vehicle. I just want to rack it up. I know my, my time is over right now, but I'd like to say that, I'm trying to keep myself as calm as possible, but I'd like to say that... I'm trying to keep myself as calm as possible, but I'd like to say that the Southfield Police Department illegally entered the, the record that was provided that night. There was a police report that was made at the request of my auntie. The name on the report isn't in my auntie's name, even though she is the one who called the, she's the one, the one who also called the police to the residence. It is in the name of my mother who, the police, well, she came to the scene because she was trying to visit the house. The police who responded, there was at least four or six respondent officers. The police told that, told my mother that she was not allowed to interfere with the, the situation that was going on at the residence or whatnot. Why would it be in my mother's name if my mother had no parts in the, the speak that was going on, that was being called or whatnot? The only other issue that I want to bring forward to-
Your time is up.
I'll come back later.
Our next speaker is Mike Sima. Are you here for the, for the public hearing? Okay. Our next speaker is Alicia Jackson.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, council members, and good evening to the residents of City of Southfield. My name is Alicia Jackson, how are you today? The first topic I would like to talk about is the construction that's going on between Northwestern Highway, Southfield Road, Mount Vernon. And then I see more construction cones coming down Greenfield, like between Nine and Ten Mile. So my question to you council members in the mirror, and I guess is, well, the road commission's not here, but would there be any construction on Mount Vernon between Southfield Road and Greenfield? Like, there has never been no construction, no improvement on those roads since I've been living here, and that's been since 92. So, and then if it is improvement on those roads, can you guys plead at speed bumps? You guys put a speedometer on F Street, but people don't care about that. Every single day, I see people driving at least 70 miles an hour, honking other people just to get out the way, pass them by. It's kids on that block, animals, pets on that block, autistic kids on that block, and it's ridiculous. I've caught a few times the non-police department to say, hey, can you get a patrol person out here? Because these people, it's just, it's ridiculous, it's like a freeway. I mean, it might as well be 70 miles an hour, because that's how much their speed is going. Secondly, I love how the City of Southfield is improving. I do want to know, would there be any revitalizations in like the community center? For like, something for like our youth to do? Whether we can start like an indoor pool or splash pad like some of these other cities offer? Southfield is the only city that do not offer a full-size community center with like indoor pools or enrichment centers. We don't do that. And that would help us as the City of Southfield to bring business here, to keep our residents here, instead of going to say Oak Park, swimming, paying their money, when we can have our own, and that's it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mary Brown. Mary Brown?
I'm Mary Brown. I feel we should-
No, there's, that's fine? Okay. Those speakers were from SNCOG. Our next speaker is Greg Keeler.
Greg Keeler, resident of Southfield. Last week, Monday, you had a meeting, there was a room next door to this. That room is not big enough to hold a nice size audience, let alone for us to be able to hear one another. If you at the table cannot hear the speaker, then us sitting in the audience definitely cannot hear. This is not the first time I've said this to you, or the second time, or the third time. This should not be a continuation of saying that. This room is sitting over here empty and vacant with microphones so that we can hear, with enough seats, so that if the public wants to come in and hear how their city is being ran and what is going on, we should be able to be in a space that we can come in and hear, not stand, not get up and move around so each others can have chairs, or not have, one of you leave from the table to make sure that people are getting seats. We should have all council people sitting there and being able to listen, but it is nice to know that some will get up and show us exactly where our seats and everything else. I come in here, I don't have to look around. I'm not behind nobody, I'm looking at you straight forward. And I think that was the thing that was said when we went over there, was this was a trial. Trial seems to be failing. Come over here, have the meetings, so people can come in and have seats. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Keith Harris.
How you doing today? Today I want to talk to you about respect. You know, every one of you know my wife. I have the most considerate, most professional wife anyone you have ever met. If any one of you have ever heard my wife come up here and mention anybody's name, disrespectful. Not one person. But every time my wife come to this podium, Pam Gerald comes up here, she disrespects my wife. I've heard her disrespect some of the most professional people in this city. I'm talking about people with masters, PhDs, double masters in PhDs. People who are running for this city. You got every right to run for this city if you're an advocate for justice. Now, the only time you can't run for this city is when you have a felony on you. For a person who comes to this podium and say, I've been here 40 years, in 30 of those years, she probably what, she was living here, or longer. But if you've been living here for that long and they never ran, that's your problem. Or maybe you got a felony on you. But when you give a person that much authority, to think she can go get the police to try to remove my wife, I wish the hell a cop would put their hands on her. All hell would break loose. And in that room that day, when y'all had that meeting, when the cops came, because she said she wanted my wife to leave because she had a shirt on, and I walked over to these two white cops, they said, Keith, step back, we ain't, we ain't, we ain't gonna do nothing like that. She tried to have me arrested, and walked over to the police station. Now, I don't know what kind of authority you've given her, but for someone to say, the police department is mine, the seniors are mine, the, the fire department is mine, I'm an advocate for 30, 40 years here. You know enough is enough, and I'm not lying. I'm not, I don't, I don't believe in, I don't believe in slandering people's character. But when you see some of the best people in the world, in this city, deltas, sororities, fraternities, and I've never seen someone so insulting. If you want to run, run. But we are going to be asking for a felony background check on her. Because as big as her mouth is, she should run for office, if you can, if you can pass a felony background check. But enough is enough is enough on insulting some of the most decent people in the world. Walk all over me, because I will walk back on you. But to insult my wife, to insult Mr. Greg, and to insult everybody else, and you council president, you sit there with a foolish look, and you allow it, shame on you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Pamela Gerald.
And all of God's people said, amen. I'm just going to say that irritation is an invitation to elevation, and some things you just don't even have to respond to. I should have brought my Bible. I maybe should have read some scriptures for three minutes. But let me see if I can stop laughing and get to what I wanted to talk about. On July 23rd, our police chief gave a community forum. We talked about the dangers of synthetic drugs, how to administer Narcan, and human trafficking to all the businesses that watch the council meetings, all the residents, the advisory board members that either gave a donation, that served food there, that assisted in the cleanup and the setup. We want to thank you from the bottom of our hearts. It's not an easy thing to do to put on such a large-scale event. And I just want to thank my chief for not being caught up in the political process, that when these events are done, they're done for the public, for information, and not for campaigning. That's something that, that seal, or that badge, or that symbol does not want to get involved in. And I'm speaking for me, and not on behalf of my chief or the police department. This is Pamela Gerald, or PG, speaking to you, so thank you, people. I am appalled that we spent $95,000 thanks to those race baiters and haters for a primary election to eliminate one person. Now, everybody is so concerned about seniors and what we want to do for our community when you're campaigning. Let's think of what we could have done with $95,000. We could have remodeled these two bathrooms right here by council chambers. We could have remodeled those bathrooms in Parks and Rec. That's what we could have done with $95,000. The people voted to do away with the primaries because Southfield is probably one of three or five cities within Oakland County that still does primary elections. So we voted to remove it, then you voted to put it back on. How do you feel that it was $95,000 to get rid of one person? So when you talk about being frugal, be frugal, but don't scare the seniors talking about voter suppression. They don't want you to come out and vote. That's not true about the City of Southfield, and I'm always going to get up here and speak for another 43 years if I'm still alive. Thank you.
All right, that concludes our communications. The first speaker spoke about an issue with the police department. Unfortunately, I don't have any information that I can, can answer, but we will reach out to our police chief and see what, what information we can gather. Our second speaker spoke about the construction that is taking place in some areas of Southfield. Currently, Mount Vernon between Greenfield and Southfield is not slated for construction. We are working on repairs, although we do know that it is a high priority area. We continue to seek out grants, similar to the grant that we received of $4 million to reconstruct Mount Vernon between Southfield and Northwestern. But our, both of our city engineer and our public works director are here. They did hear the comments. We will continue to repair and patch Mount Vernon as best we can until we have some substantial funds to replace that entire road. Speed bumps, is it a possibility? The South, the city council did approve a traffic calming program. It can be found on the city's website, but we can also make sure that the speaker receives a copy. There is a petition that is filed, that is submitted to the city where 60% of the residents on a specific street or area that are requesting speed bumps can apply. And there is a process and a scoring method that goes through that, and if it goes through the process and speed bumps is shown as something that will help with speeding issues in that, on that roadway, it will be installed by the city. But again, there is a process for that, and we'll make sure that the speaker receives that information. The police department will also tell you that 70% of those speeding usually are from the neighborhood itself. So sometimes it's more just talking to your neighbors as well. And again, there was talk about a pool or community center. The, as was mentioned earlier, the city council is working through requests for proposals from qualified builders and architects for a year-round indoor pool that will be, take place here on the campus. Even the Oak Park Pool, I believe, is closing this weekend and will be closed for indefinitely until they rebuild their new one. So it is something that cities are struggling with all over, but we do, as I mentioned, have budgeted money and are working towards a year-round indoor pool that will take place here on the campus. We also have a number of programs. We have dance programs, sports programs, that Parks and Rec does offer. Our Parks and Rec director is in the audience. Ms. Fields, if you don't mind, just raising your hand. She can help with, if there's specific programming that you would like, if they don't offer it, something they can look into. But many times, programs are based on how many participants they have and they can get. So programs can change based on requests. Also, our library has a number of programs as well. You can go to the southfieldlibrary.org, or just run across the parking lot. They have brochures, and they have a number of other programs that you can have. And I do see our city librarian is in the back, right there. So you can speak to her as well, and she can tell you about the wonderful youth programs that we have. There was a comment about the, when the council has our study session in the room next door, we are trying to figure out the, the microphones. We did have some talking from the audience last week, and we are trying to, we need everyone's participation to try to keep that room quiet so we can hear the speakers, hear the questions from our council, as well as the answers. But we are trying to figure out better microphones and sound system in that room as well. And that are all, those are all the comments that I can speak to. All right, council, did I miss anything? Is there any other comments that are, Mr. Hicks?
Through the chair? Can, can you just maybe explain why we meet next door? That might be helpful.
Sure. So, our meeting schedule, this is considered a regular meeting where we have all of our public hearings, our voting. It's a more formal meeting, if you will. When we meet next door, we call it a committee of a whole meeting or a study session. That's when the city departments or different developers come and pitch their, their plans, their ideas, and we can have more of a back-and-forth session, work out kinks within their plans, talk to city departments. You'll see tonight, we want to approve a number of new fire trucks and ambulances for the fire department, but that comes at a cost. And we can, as a council, we can talk about those rather than in a more, we'll say, relaxed setting where we're not, I guess, on display. We're not pressed for time. We have more communication, more discussion, and we work out a lot of the issues prior to taking a vote on them. You'll see this evening, we have a consent agenda, and those- You'll see this evening, we have a consent agenda, and those are all the items that we've discussed. So, we do that in a, what we call a study session, because it's less formal, and we can ask questions and work out the kinks. Would you, would you add anything?
The only thing that I would add, Council President, is that in that session, we have, when we're having our discussion, there's actually a limit, or at least we try to limit how many things that we act upon. I, I refer to it more as more of a study session, where we have the opportunity to do, do as the president mentioned, do a deep dive, ask questions, and do the proper due diligence amongst ourselves before presenting to public, where we can ask a variety of questions to get either educated on an item, or to elaborate on an item, get clarity. So, that's one of the reasons why we meet in that space. And, and I would agree with Council President, we do have to do more from an audiovisual perspective to make it so that those who are in attendance can feel part of the meeting and hear the dialogue amongst those at the table and who are presenting.
I will say that, I was, I was in there for another meeting. Those who sit closer to the back of the room, the speakers work much better than in the front of the room. But it's, it is something, I, I'm looking at our deputy administrator, but, and he's our, our go-to with audiovisual malfunctions. He works with the, either the cable department here, or audi, or audiovisual, or the city's electrician when we need to fix things. So, we, we do fix those things. I'm sorry?
I wanted to say that even though it is full, the meeting room usually gets less people at the end, because department heads do come in, and they don't stay long. So, that's part of the reasoning behind it, too. Depending on what the subject is, we may have seven or eight policemen in there, which may not be the norm. And so, that sometimes happens. So, really, it's just about being a little bit patient. And when you do come in, there are chairs there to there, which I help to seat some people. And if you can kindly, people that do come in, please remove your baggage and your purses, where other people can sit down and sort of sit together. We just try to work together to make things happen. You know, it just, sometimes it's just crowded, and sometimes it's not. You know, but we have to work with what we have, too. You know, we do. There's not much we can really do about that right now. We're doing the best we can, I think.
Okay. All right. Thank you, counsel. I appreciate your, your patience. With that, we move into the regular, our regular agenda. The first is a number of minutes to approve.
Through the chair?
Yes.
I move that we approve the meeting minutes as listed.
Support.
Twenty-three tomorrow.
No, I can do that, it's fine. We have a motion by Councilman Hicks, supported by Councilwoman Hoag, to approve the minutes of May 20th, 2024, June 10th, 24, budget meeting, June 10th, 24, regular meeting, committee of a whole, June 17th, 24, regular meeting of June 24th, 24, regular meeting of July 1st, 24, joint meeting minutes with the planning commission of July 15th, 2024, regular meeting minutes of August 19th, 24, committee of the whole minutes, August 22nd, and the regular meeting minutes of August 26th, 24. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is our consent agenda, and as we just mentioned, the consent agenda are items that are considered routine, non-controversial, or have previously been discussed, usually in our study session next door. Counsel, do you have any items you wish to hold for further discussion? Councilman Brightwell?
C, item C.
Item C. Okay. Counsel, any other items? All right. Item C is the fuel management system. Yes. Mr. Brightwell, do you have a question?
I just have a question, a question, I don't get a clarification. I'm familiar with, with the fleet management system. How does this, does this feed right into the fleet management, and or is this, how's the fleet management being, being used?
So, the current system feeds into the fleet man, so we currently have, the software is from AssetWorks. There's Fuel Focus, and there's Fleet Focus, and those both are tied together. With our new asset management system, we also have fleet manage, management capabilities with that system. So, we want to remove that duplication of technology there, where instead of having Fleet Focus and OpenGov to do fleet management, we would like to cancel our subscription for Fleet, Fleet Focus. Unfortunately, Fuel Focus is not available to us as a standalone solution. So, we have to move to a, to a different fuel management system, because the, the current system costs us $19,000 a year, plus 5% annual increase, where this new system that we're proposing is less than $4,000 annually.
Okay.
And just, it's just a fuel management system. It'll integrate with our asset management system, which we'll also use for fleet management.
Okay. Now, I'm gonna follow up on this. I'm a big believer in fleet management. This is a management, too. So, are you saying that you want to get rid of something that is servative function of fleet management for fuel management? And in reading this, I wanted to make sure, are we still had, do we do, do we still have a fleet management so-called system?
Yeah, we will. And, and the system currently, it's not gonna, we won't get rid of it until the end of this year. In the meantime, we are implementing the fleet management system through OpenGov. So, there's going to be a couple months of overlap there, where we can transfer the data over as well. And we need to u, use our fleet management system in a more robust manner. Currently, it's not really being used fully, not with all of its functionality. So, we're looking at improving the, the use of that system as well.
Okay. All right. If I understand you correctly, you'll get rid of the current fleet management system?
Correct.
And will you have something in the future that would serve the same purpose of a fleet management system?
Yeah, we'll have it before we get rid of this system, the, the current system.
Okay. All right. Do, do you?
So, in, in November, in November, we'll go live with the new system. In December, we'll end our subscription at the end of December with, with the existing system.
All right. Okay, well, I, this is a big enough discussion, I would call you offline.
Sure.
And with Mrs. Zorn, fleet management is a very important management, too, because fleet is one of my biggest investment, in that fleet.
Right.
So.
I mean, I'd love to hear your thoughts. Give me a call, and we can talk about it.
Okay. All right, then. Good enough. Okay, I'm done.
Mr. President?
Okay. Yes.
I move that we approve consent and agenda item A, brownfield redevelopment plan and tax increment financing plan and development, and the reimbursement agreement for MAB real estate redevelopment. B, economic development initiative, request for two public hearings from 26250 Northwestern Building to establish A, district and commercial rehab exemption certificate under PA 210 of 2005 as amended. C, authorization to purchase fuel management system. D, authorization to purchase factor accessories. E, purchase of vehicles for fire. F, authorization to apply to the local bridge program, Inster Road Bridge over the Rouge River. G, receipt of bids for Central Park Boulevard and Gorton Drive Rehab. H, authorization to contract with OHM advisors for library mechanical upgrades, boiler replacement, construction phase services. I, Southfield Police Department custodial services for police buildings. J, proposed agreement with the City of Lathor Village for continuing provision of police and fire dispatch services, services for a two-year period beginning July 1st, 2025. K, emergency management position. L, authorization to purchase three Stoffen heavy-duty pumper replacement engines. M, authorization to purchase two 2026 replacement road rescue, ultrametic life support unit ambulances for the fire department. N, authorization to purchase one Stoffen heavy-duty pumper rescue engine. O, authorization to purchase a vehicle for streets and highway supervisor. P, yeshiva beth yehuda, request delegation of school plan review and inspection authority to the city of Southfield.
Support.
It was moved by Councilwoman Hoag, supported by Councilman Hicks, to approve consent agenda items A through P. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, counsel. All right. Next, we have two public hearing and site plans, and our first is PSLU 25-0004, special use request by Atlas Consulting on behalf of Journey Express LLC to renovate and reuse the building in site at 24450 Telegraph for used vehicle sales and vehicle repair accessory to the vehicle sales use.
Yep. Through the chair, as I brought up to you before the meeting, that's a typo on the address.
I didn't know that.
It's correctly written here on the screen at 24260, and we did verify that it was properly published. I apologize, there's, there's some transposed numbers in the agenda and some of the paperwork, but the correct address is 24260, and it was properly advertised in the paper. As stated, this is PSLU 25-0004, address 24260 Telegraph Road, petitioner's Atlas Consulting, parcel number 2428151-011 is also properly advertised here. Existing zoning is I-1 industrial with vehicular parking towards the rear, and the proposed use is to renovate and reuse the building in site for used auto sales and accessory auto services. Current zoning and future land use are provided on the screen. Site is, was a non-conforming situation that's been vacant for a number of years now. Existing view from Telegraph Road. This is the proposed site plan. We're going to pave, clean up the site, provide adequate parking, barrier-free access. Basically, this is only auto body for cars that are going to be sold from the premises, building elevations. And with that, I'd like to invite the petitioner to come up to add any additional comments before we go to public hearing.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Mike Seema, 400 Monroe Street, 24 Detroit, Michigan. I'm the consultant on this project right here. My client purchased this property. This property's been vacant over five years, with a lot of damage to the property, and weeds, and my client cleaned it up, and he's willing to put a business in it, and gonna be, dealer is gonna be only used car dealer between '20 and '24. That's what we're gonna be selling over here. Also, we're gonna be doing facelift to the building, landscape over 20,000 square feet of paving the property, and also, we're gonna put trees in the front of the, the building to make sure that place will look professional and good business. Thank you.
All right. We will now have the public hearing, and we'll bring you back up afterwards for any questions that may come up from the audience or from the council. So, if you want to have a seat, we'll be right, we'll be right back with you. This is a public hearing for PSLU 25-0004, special use request to, at 24260 Telegraph for used vehicle sales and vehicle repair at the site. If anybody wishes to speak, you have three minutes. Please give your name and address for the record. Don't come all at once. All right. Scene none, the public hearing is closed. Counsel, do you have any questions?
Chair?
Yes.
I move that we approve the special use request by Atlas Consulting on behalf of Journey Express LLC to renovate and reuse the building in site at 24450 Telegraph for used vehicles and vehicle repair accessory to the vehicle sales use.
Support.
Through the chair, just a friendly amendment, Councilwoman Hoag.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The address is 24260 Telegraph Road.
Thank you. With the corrected address, please.
Support.
All right. So, we have a motion by Councilwoman Hoag, supported by Councilwoman Haynes, to approve PSLU 25-0004, as presented with the correct address as 24260 Telegraph Road. And again, it was properly published for the public hearing in the paper, so we do not have anything to worry about. Counsel, any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations. Thank you. Don't forget your posters.
Thank you.
All right. Our next public hearing is for PSLU 25-0005, a special use request by Abigail Pierce to operate a group childcare home on the property located at 24749 Maryland. Mr. Crowe?
Yes, thank you. Again, PSLU 25-0005, petitioner, Abigail Pierce, 24749 Maryland Street. Existing zoning is R3 residential. Proposed use is to operate a group childcare home. It is currently operated and licensed as a family childcare home. Hours of operation, Monday through Thursday, 8:30 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., and Friday, 8:30 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Current zoning is R3. Future land use supports moderate density, single-family. Here is an aerial of the existing site. You can see that backyard is fenced in and does have some play, play structures. This is the front of the property, which blends in with the neighborhood. Here's the basement floor plan where the daycare will be operated, and here is existing photos of the current family daycare operation. With that, I'd like to ask the petitioner to come up, make any comments before the public hearing.
Good evening. Abigail Pierce at 24749 Maryland Street. I would like to expand my childcare. I have usually roughly 90% of Southfield residents in my care, and with this expansion, I'm opening another job opportunity for a Southfield resident.
Could you just give a little bit of background, how long you've operated, and some of your education background?
I've been an early child educator for 18 years. I've worked in daycare centers and for myself at home. I've had a childcare license since 2016, which allows me to have six children. So, with expansion of the license, I can accept 12 children.
Thank you.
All right. We will have a public hearing and bring you back up afterwards. So, this is a public hearing for PSLU 25-0005, a special use request by Abigail Pierce to operate a group childcare home located at 24749 Maryland. Each speaker will have three minutes. Please give your name and address for the record.
Pamela Gerald, PO Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037-0155. My telephone number's 248-346-0439, the same number I've had for quite a while. We can never have enough childcare. It is sad that a lot of women that work cannot afford childcare, or they have to take their children into other communities trying to find childcare. So, if we have someone here that's providing a valuable service, and they can provide more children with that educational experience, getting them ready for school, I think it's a win-win situation for the parent, for the person that's I think it's a win-win situation for the parent, for the person that's running the daycare, and also for the city. So I would be in total support. I can't recall the, oh, I would be in total support of PSLU twenty five dash zero 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 five. There was not enough agendas, so I didn't get one, and a lot of people didn't get one. But thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak to this item?
Good evening, counsel. Gabby Grossbard, two five four two eight Wood Villa Place in Southfield. Children thrive in a playgroup that's in a home. That is the proper environment for young kids at a young age. And I encourage you, and I ask you to please approve this expansion because that, it would encourage a lot of other playgroups to get licensed and, and do things the right way. This is the right thing for the kids, the right thing for the neighborhood, and the right thing for the community. Thank you very much, counsel.
Anyone else? So again, please just give your name and address for the record.
Um, Alicia Jackson, sixteen to eighteen, Mount Vernon Street. Um, I do have a question for Ms. Pierce. What are the age limits?
If you can ask us and we'll answer everything afterwards.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. I do apologize. Um, what are the age limits, the age requirements of other childcare? And is, is it open to all nationalities? Or is it a specific nationality, ethnic, ethnic group that are able to participate in the childcare services?
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Comments? Alright, the public hearing is closed. Ms. Pierce, if you don't mind coming up, if you can answer some of those questions, and then we'll take some questions from the council.
Um, my daycare is open to anybody that, sorry. Um, my daycare is open to anybody that would like to come. Regarding though, how the state presents each daycare, they ask you if you follow a certain curriculum and such, and faith-based. So I am a Jewish faith-based daycare center, and I let parents know that. That's my teaching that I'll be giving over. I currently, I turn away so many people, I am booked two years out. So it's actually very hard to get into my, my daycare. And again, thank you to Mr. Grossbard. It's something very much needed in, in the city of Southfield as there is just not enough licensed child daycares to provide for all the children.
Ms. Pierce? There was a question about age, ages.
Oh, yes, okay. Um, ages, so between six months to three going on four. I have some children that repeat, will stay with me for two or three years possibly.
Okay. And, and there's some, there's some state limits with the younger children?
Right, correct. With childcare, it's all state mandated. I can only have a certain amount of children within a certain age bracket. So the, how the brackets work, and again, you can find this on Laura's childcare licensing manual. I can only have two children from zero to eighteen months. And then the next bracket is from nineteen to twenty-nine months. And then the next bracket, again, would be from twenty-nine, thirty months plus.
Okay. So.
A total of six children, but within a certain age brackets. It's a one to six ratio. So again, with my expansion, I will have, God willing, have twelve children with myself and assistant teacher.
Okay, and you currently, with this expansion, will you have any additional openings or all the spots?
All the spots currently are, are, are full with my expansion, but I get calls every single day.
Alright. Do you, would you like to, I'll wait till after our vote to ask the next question, but, Mr. Crowde? I know that last week you mentioned, this went through the Planning Commission, their public hearing. I did watch it because you said it was unusual that.
There was a number of people, they were all in, in favor of, and positive.
All in favor, there was no one who spoke against it, so.
I believe both neighbors on either side spoke in support of it as well.
So I, I actually watched the Planning Commission meeting to, and I will, I will verify that that statement was true. No one, no, no one came up, so. Um, any other questions?
I just wanted, I'd just like to commend you for what you've done, being a mother that have had to take care of so many kids myself. I think it's very important that we have someone qualified in the community to do things. And to the young lady that was just asking the question, we approved earlier some, another daycare. So we have some qualified daycare home care in the area which come through the city as well. And we really appreciate them, and we really appreciate you coming through as well for what you do. So I encourage other people to look into those as well. And for those that are out there, we need more that are qualified, doing the right thing, following the rules and the guidelines. You know, I think it's so important that parents have close knit setting for their younger kids, and I approve of it, and I'd like to, uh.
We have one other question, but we will, we will allow you to make the motion after.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we covered a lot of items during our study session last Monday. My hearing, my, what, what was the age group again, the age maximum?
The age maximum, um, from six months going on to going on three years old before they enter preschool, three going on four. A total of six children between the ages of six months to three years old.
Okay. Yes, clearly, there, there's a need for your service in, in what you're doing. And I think we approved practically every home care that came through here. Obviously, you walked through, you went through the process of getting a state approval and various other things that, 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 that way. Also, I think my colleague wanna give a motion, I'm, I'm.
Well, we have, alright, we have another question, Councilman Hicks.
So again, as I mentioned to you in our study session, thank you for all that you've done, and you do. So just thinking forward, you know, because you, you've been doing a lot. I'm a product of a very similar homeschooling environment. And I understand how the foundation set during that helped me. So, you know, just thinking forward, you know, we, we do, I have our economic director in the back, and you've been working with Mr. Crowde. And there's a lot of empty brick and mortar around here. So when you're ready to go from a home center to a daycare center, you know.
Yes, many people, yes, many people have asked when. Um, thank God, I'm a mother of six, so I need to balance both that right now.
Just trying to, you know, put it out.
There's a time and place for everything. Um, right now, it needs to be the, the correct balance for my, my family and, and the growing daycare. Uh, but now I am ready to take the next step forward of going up to twelve with the city of Southfield's permission.
Just speaking to an existence, you know.
But if I could ask a question, the state of Michigan has already, and would give me the permission to move up to twelve. Um, I'm waiting for the city's approval, and I need that document so I can start next week. So I just turning to you, when can I have that document to submit to?
Yeah, through the chair, if everything gets approved tonight, we can get a certified resolution from the clerk's office in the next day or so.
Okay.
And typically, they'll send me a notice to say, has zoning been approved?
Okay.
So those are the two actions that would be required. But we should be able to follow up with the clerk's office tomorrow and within a day or two, get you a certified resolution.
Thank you.
Alright, well, any other questions?
Okay.
Yes?
And I just want to add to that, just one other thing, with your expertise advice, maybe sometime in the future. Not saying maybe the city or somewhere, you can give the assistance to help other people, to guide them to do what you do. If, you know, your arms can't extend out to that, because I know that having the experience does help people to get involved to do that. When you know what you're doing, it helps them to do it in easy.
So I, also, I get a lot of calls, and I'm the person to call on the community. Um, maybe you can, I can ask you, who can I talk to the city that the process can be a little smoother in getting this? Because one of the humps to get, you know, is this process.
And if we have, we have a person right behind you, Shelley Freeman.
Okay.
And she, she can help you with that.
Because.
Thank you so much, and congratulations, because that would be an asset to our community. Having said that, I, well, Mr. President, I would like to approve PSLU twenty five dash zero 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 five the special use request by Abigail Pierce to operate a group childcare home on property located at two four seven four nine Maryland Street, parcel twenty-four dash twenty-five dash two zero four dash zero two one in the city of Southfield.
Support?
It's been moved by Councilwoman Haynes, supported by Councilwoman Banks, to approve PSLU two five dash zero 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 five as presented. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, counsel, we will now move on to, to ordinances to enact.
Mr. President?
Yes?
Yes, I move that we enact ordinance number eighteen fifteen to rezone parcel two seven three oh one, West Eleven Mile Road, to ODD Overlay Development District.
Support?
It's been moved by Councilwoman Banks, supported by Councilwoman Hoag, to enact ordinance number one eight one five. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bless you.
Sneeze. Freezing.
Mr. President?
Yes?
Yes, I move that we enact ordinance number eighteen sixteen, PTZA twenty-five dash zero 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 three, a text amendment to amend Title B, Zoning and Planning, Chapter forty-five, zoning of the code of the city of Southfield to update the exceptions to height standards to specifically address flagpoles.
Support?
It's been moved by Councilwoman Banks, supported by Councilwoman Hoag, to enact ordinance number one eight one six. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. President?
Yes?
I move that we approve the travel expense report for Councilman Brightwell for the GFOA Washington DC, June twenty eighth through July twenty third, as well as the expense report for Council Pro Tem Hicks for the twenty twenty-five NLC Summer Conference Houston, Texas, July thirtieth through August second.
It's a point.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Hoag, supported by Councilwoman Haynes, to approve the two travel expenses as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I abstain.
You can't abstain.
Why?
Well, since, what do I do?
You can, you can approve it. You're allowed to approve your own expense report.
I gotta approve my own expense report?
Mm-mm.
Okay.
Just say, just say yes. Please.
Correct, but I, previous city attorneys have said that because you're approving your own expense report, there's, there's no conflict, there's no real issue, so there's no problem approving it.
Right.
Right.
I've gained, I've gained it all kind of way. I, I approve my report.
Okay.
Okay, I've been.
So. Alright, we'll try this, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion passes.
Amen.
Thank you.
I'm just trying to be legal.
Alright. Counsel comments, Councilwoman Hoag, do you have anything for this evening?
Um, just I'd like to wish all of the students a successful school year. And just as the drivers, that we be mindful of the school buses that you are legally required to stop when that arm is out. Um, I'll never forget the one student that was killed, my son's friend. And I was just thinking about that. And all we need to do is just have patience, especially with all the construction going on. Please be mindful of the school buses and those children that have to walk. And again, I'm wishing all of the students well this year, and may they be productive and successful, that's all.
Thank you. Councilwoman Banks?
Thank you. Um, I concur with everything my colleague said, took it right from me. But I'd also like to thank the city of Southfield, and more specifically, our Parks and Recreation Department. Last Thursday, we had a beautiful evening with our senior appreciation day. The front lawn was just bursting with colors and people. And it was so nice to see the promenade that we have out there. People were dancing, and it was a beautiful evening. So thank you for a very successful evening. I know our seniors really appreciated it. That's all.
Thank you. Councilman Hicks?
So, so I agree with Councilwoman Hayne, I mean, Hoag and Banks about the children going back to school. But I really want to give a shout out to the parents, the grandparents, the guardians, who all celebrated today of having the kids go back to school. Including me. So, uh, also today, we had our monthly meeting with the Michigan Municipal League Finance Subcommittee. And as Congresswoman Tolee mentioned, that next month, the budget's coming out. There was a lot of discussion today on impacts to what the projections of that budget's gonna do to the state, which also trickle down to our funding. So stay tuned, I'm gonna keep you all aware of potential impacts that impact us. I mean, they highlighted some that impact school districts and other parts of government. But we are not gonna make it away safely from the potential financial federal cutback, so stay tuned.
Alright, thank you. Councilwoman Haynes?
Yep. Just want to say a, a special thank you to the Southfield community for your prayers, support, texts, cards, calls throughout the time and loss of my father. And I just wanted to bring my dad's picture, because he was supposed to be here last week with me here. And my dad was heavily involved in politics, very heavily involved, very outspoken. I wonder where I got that from. But anyway, um, he would have been here, I would love to have had him here. And just wanted to say the importance of our city services. Uh, my dad lived in Niagara Falls, and when I made the call, fire, police, and EMS were out there, and they worked on my dad for at least an hour. And they were very helpful and supportive in keeping the crowd away and people away. And I know the importance of city services because we have the great city service here, and I am grateful for that. And my heart goes out to those people in our community that are taking care of elderly people. It is not a small task, it is very, very time-consuming. And for those of you sometimes that forget, when we talk to people, how we talk to people, you never know what people are going through. So it's so important to be kind and considerate when, even when you don't know what people are going through, because it matters when you have people that care about you, or that don't even know you, that extend a kind hand. There were people that came up to me when I was there, and was talking about all the things that my dad did in the city for young people, for people, and how kind he was. And for that, I am grateful, because he can be remembered as being a very kind and loving person. And I think that's so important today, that we remember, how do you want to live what people say about you, and what they think about you, and what you do? And I'm grateful to my dad for doing that, and I'm grateful to him for teaching us that. And I'm still working on and learning to do that myself in this world where we have things where people aren't very kind, aren't very respectful. But you never know how an impact you may have on a person with your kindness and respect, even to us up here. So let's think about that, and thank you so much from the bottom of my heart for all that you have done to help me and continue to pray for my family. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Brightwell?
Yeah, I wanted to, first of all, give a shout out to veterans. And we know that veterans, uh, they're wounded, may not, might be visibly wounded. And there are quite a few things that veterans in the military have to go through, and it affects people differently. So if you know a veteran, or if you are a veteran, please feel free to call nine eight eight dash one, nine eight eight, and hit the one for the, for the current advisor there. And also, now I'm gonna just put on my cap again, as the chair of the Boards and Commission, along with Ms. Haynes and Mr. Hicks, that serves as the committee. But I want to, it's always difficult when you are a, a leader and or a parent to select just one child and or a responsibility. But I really want to give a shout out to the Total Living Commission. As you know, this is a, our front lawn has been putting on quite a bit for the last couple of months. And several, each time I was out in those settings on the front lawn, they. the Total Living Commission was fulfilling their mission to the city of Southfield. They had someone out there passing out literature with respect to filling out a survey to what you would expect from the Total Living Commission. All said and done, I just want to thank the Total Living Commission as the chair of the board and, and commission here in the city of Southfield, want to thank you for fulfilling your mission as far as fulfilling your function as reaching out to the cities, the citizens of Southfield, asking for their input into what they, what you want them to be doing as opposed to they, uh, the Total Living Commission telling you what they are doing. So I might get into a little trouble with respects unless singled out a commission in our, um, but so be it, they're doing what they should be doing and I, I love them for that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I like those comments, especially as I was on the, I was the chair of the Total Living Commission for many years, so I like when they continue the good work.
That was too far back.
I also wanted to thank Parks and Rec for their senior appreciation night. I spoke with Ms. Fields that evening, they gave out, uh, they had prepared seven hundred dinners for the seniors and they went through them. Um, the entertainment was, was good. I know that I did make an announcement during, when I was trying to find raffle winners, um, that I would do the hustle and I did do the hustle and I don't. I was told with, uh, Councilwoman Banks, I know the mayor was there as well. It was on cable or I know cable got it, so we're waiting for that video so I can see how, uh, embarrassing I probably looked. But, um, I was a man of my word and I did do that. But it was a really nice event. Um, and the reason they were, they were promoting the hustle was, uh, because they have classes, uh, for the seniors, um, three different levels and you can, uh, go to Parks and Rec and sign up for that as well. My kids are not in school yet, so I'm still counting on the days, um, but I will be partying when they do go back to school. But, um, this, uh, coming up on September seventh is grandparents' day here in the city of Southfield and Parks and Rec is having eight, across the ages game day. Uh, so they invite kids and their beloved grandparents to team up or face off in a variety of different games and activities. Uh, it will take place here on the front lawn. Again, that is September seventh, two thirty to five. There is a small fee, um, but they will have card games, yard games, board games, group bingo, scatagory sessions, they'll have a DJ, they'll have a lot more, they'll have something for everyone. So, um, again, that's grandparents' game day here on September seventh between two thirty and five on the front lawn. So it should be fun time. All right, with that, Mr. Mayor?
I will, uh, just add that, uh, we did have a business opening on, uh, Friday. Um, a new gas station by the Veer family on Northwestern Highway below, uh, Twelve Mile. Beautiful store, uh, congratulations, uh, uh, to, um, the company as, um, they did a bang up job there and a beautiful piece of, uh, Southfield's art, uh, unique piece is on the side of the building. So, uh, quite nice and there, um, besides, um, gasoline, you can, uh, there's a whole wide range of, uh, smoothies and, uh, other beverages that are available. And I would say we enjoyed them.
Thank you. Mr. Administrator?
Yes, I, I do have an item, a piece of business to ask the council to authorize. I'm asking council to adopt a resolution consistent with the Uniform Budgeting and Accounting Act, expedition authority, expenditure authority to hereby appropriate, uh, for Housing Choice Voucher Program, section eight, in the amount of two point seven commencing July one twenty-five and, and June thirtieth twenty-six. Let me just give you a brief explanation. When we adopted the budget, we took the section eight pro, program out. We had started a contract negotiation with the Plymouth Housing Commission. Number of personnel changes in, in HUD impacted our ability to move that item forward. So we're going to, we're scheduling this to start a contract October first till December thirty-first with a transfer effective on January one of twenty-six. If you recall, the administrative fees for administering the section eight have been substantially reduced. So what we have happening is the larger housing commissions are, there, there's a consolidation happening. HUD has actually put out a set of rules, how this is to ha, happen and they only want transfer dates to start July one and January one. So we'll be under a contract with Plymouth Housing for three months and we'll move towards that contract transfer effective January one of, of twenty-six. And when we started this last April, there, I, I can tell you folks that I've known for thirty plus years and now left, uh, the US Department of Housing and, uh, all new faces. So we're dealing with their, their staff and working our way through that.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move that we adopt section eight housing budget for fiscal year twenty-six pending transfer to Plymouth Housing Commission.
It has been moved by Councilman Hicks, supported by Councilwoman Banks, to adopt the section eight housing budget for the fiscal year twenty-six pending the transfer to the Plymouth Housing Commission. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you for that item. I have just a, a couple other comments I want to share with counsel. Somewhat is Councilman Pro Tem Hicks has indicated, the, uh, we're still waiting for a state budget to be adopted. State budget projections are estimating revenue shortfalls as much as a hundred and fifty thousand. The big beautiful bill has a estimated impact on the state of Michigan, about one point eight billion. We don't know the full ripple effect for that, but we continue administratively to work with MML and even our lobbyists to make sure that our interests are being, uh, protected. It's a very changing landscape, very, uh, quickly moving and, you know, we started this meeting with SEMCOG presenting a check, uh, for a million dollars plus. You know, at the, as we were coming out of the co, the COVID pandemic, when the Biden administration came in and we knew that there was going to be a lot of recovery money, my administrative team sat down with, uh, all of SEMCOG. We were the first community to do that and we just, you know, we knew things were changing so quickly. We knew there was going to be a different commitment to transportation and the first transportation bill passed. And that's where you see those dollars coming from. Unfortunately, the second trans, transportation bill did not pass and there's still some repercussions on that. And we're still struggling for a transportation, transportation bill at both the federal and the state that will take care of our, our needs. So it continues something we, we watch. Last week, uh, well, two weeks ago, the mayor and I spent some time with the Michigan Municipal League working on a response to the private sector's, um, activities, in particular the housing arena. And there is actually a very well orchestrated effort to strip the local units of government of some of our zoning, um, responsibilities. And this is an industry that's, you know, they have an executive director, they've hired a multi-firm lobbyist to push their agenda. So working with the Michigan Municipal League, an alternative was proposed last Tuesday in Lansing and that, you know, emphasizes partnership over exemption. It also recommending that the state create a fund of, and, and fund for the next five years, a hundred and sixty million dollars a year for a total of eight hundred million to help address the housing shortage we are facing in the state of Michigan. So we continue to work in that, um, vein to make sure that these items are, that our voices are heard. And a lot of the activities this council's been doing, we're, we're, I, I believe we're moving in, in the right track. I mean, you know, the house, new housing opportunities coming in at, uh, Northland, which we approved for Middle Point from some affordable, uh, product. Well, the John Grace Project's about to break ground for affordable senior housing. I, I think there are some pieces. I think some of us are discussing how we can create opportunities for more homeownership. Some things we've done with Habitat for Humanity, but, you know, move out, uh, beyond just the rental, but for sale and purchase opportunities for all price points. So we'll continue to work on that. Then, uh, a couple, uh, other things. Last Friday, uh, the city, and I want to thank Rochelle Freeman and Sarah Malali from our business development team. We hosted the Detroit Regional Partnership over at the Travelers Towers Building, the ninth floor with the EDS. Had a del, good size delegation of state representatives, this, uh, the Detroit Regional Chamber. And keep in mind that regional partnership is part of our, we're part, Southfield is part of a five county entity that markets Southfield. So when a delegation goes out to, uh, to San Jose to track the talent from the software industry or is in Arizona looking to attract talent or Boston or, uh, we've got ten countries that are major, uh, trade partners that we look to do things from in economic development, Germany, Japan, Canada, Mexico. Those, building those relationships, they get, they allow us to have a presence that we may not be able to get. And they actually demonstrated three case studies, or they shared three case studies that talked about how efforts were brought to southeastern Michigan in that five county area. And the Lucid Motor was one. Uh, they are on the ninth floor of the Travelers Tower Building, they're looking to expand to the thirteenth floor. The job count is, is very exciting and a lot of those are folks from southeastern Michigan that are landing jobs here. And a lot of them, surprisingly, the amount of IT technology being transferred into today's automotive is, is quite impressive. Then my final comment, uh, earlier this afternoon, um, most of council was, was with us. We celebrated the, uh, Middle Point development and again, that's echoing the need for what we worked and lobbied for two years on that transformational brownfield. When we did the Northland project, the way those laws were written, we couldn't get that project to qualify. But working with our state rep, Jason Hoskins, and our state senator, we got changes made in the law that allowed a hundred and thirty-one million dollar investment to come into Southfield. And, um, that's a, a pretty impressive number. And I think it's this body working together, working with our team and our legislative folks and our lobbyists that we made that happen. So just wanted to share that and, uh, Friday, I have to tell you that Lucid, the, the product is hot. It's just a gorgeous vehicle, uh, and then when you see these, the workstations and what's happening there, uh, it's very impressive and, um, it's, it's neat to have that type of engineering happening in, in our community. Thank you.
I also forgot to mention, uh, before we get to our next speaker, that yesterday the police and fire departments, uh, faced off against a, uh, in a softball battle at Englewood Park. It was, I don't want to say anything embarrassing to the fire department, but, um, the police department, uh, did win eighteen to nine, um, but it was a nice, it was a nice event. Um, it was for, raising money for charity, um, and they said they're going to be doing these things more often. So with that, I know that both our police and fire departments are hiring. Maybe you'll have a better chance if you're good at hockey or softball, uh, since those seem to be the, the two sports that they, they seem to compete in. But in all seriousness, um, it was, it was a, a nice, it was a nice game. We're glad that they were able to get out and, and have a friendly competition to raise charity. And in all seriousness, uh, we are hiring in both those departments, so we are looking for qualified candidates. Please reach out to either the Southfield HR department or Southfield Fire or Police Departments as well. Um, if you know someone or if you are, are interested in becoming, uh, part of the wonderful Southfield Public Safety Team. All right, um, Madam Attorney, do you have anything this evening?
Evening, counsel, no, I had nothing further, thank you.
All right, thank you. Madam Clerk?
I have nothing this evening, thank you.
All right. Uh, we've already heard from our planner, everyone else has left, we have nothing to schedule. Counsel, is there anything else to come before us? All right, our meeting is adjourned.